There are three seats open on the board and seven candidates. And there is also one two-year term open on the board and three candidates. We are going to be asking questions in alphabetical order with all ten of the candidates. All right? I'm going to introduce them right now, and I ask you, when I call your name, stand up and wave to the people in the back. Okay? And then after that, you can stay seated. So, Mr. Becker.
Good afternoon.
Ms. Deepenbrock.
Hello, all.
Ms. Duddles.
Hello.
Mr. Rousher.
Kuescher.
Kuescher, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Can't read or write it. Mr. Lackner.
Hi.
Mr. Lentz.
Happy Sunday.
Ms. McKay.
Hello.
Mr. Palacios.
Hello, everyone.
Mr. Rubard.
Thanks for coming out, everyone. Appreciate it.
And Ms. Van Heel.
Hello.
All right. One minute opening statements, one minute for each question asked, and one minute for closing statements. And here we go. Mr. Becker, your first opening statement.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for this wonderful opportunity. Moved into this area, St. Charles, 27 years ago with my family. I have four students who have gone through our system, K-12. I have two students still in the system, first grade and third grade, with very special needs. Also, I am myself, I'm an educator. I just completed, two years ago, a 40-year career in education. I was a teacher, I was an administrator, and a coach at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. I think what I believe, what I believe I bring to the table is experience, empathy, and certainly a clear understanding about how schools work and what is needed. I'm a problem solver, I'm one who listens, I'm one who collaborates, and we're at a perfect time right now to bring together the best of in this community, and I want to be a part of that team to do it, our schoolwork. Thank you for coming this afternoon.
Great. And candidates, if you haven't already noticed, we have a timekeeper here. Okay? All right, good. Ms. Deepenbrock.
Hello, all. Thank you again for having us all here. I am running and very excited to run for the school board. I've been very active the last two years in keeping up with what's going on with the district, as many people did for the first time. Very vocal in the community as well about the needs of the community, and tend to be a person that folks gravitate to, to speak with. I had the honor of being on the Citizens Advisory Committee while it was still inactive in D-303, and was also, that experience assisted me in learning more about the inner workings of the school, and how the relationship between citizens, administration, and school board cohesively work together in tackling a lot of challenging topics during a very challenging time. And probably need to stop saying "um" so much. But I have a bachelor's degree in communication, as well as theater performance, as well as a master's of fine arts. I had a very successful -- thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Duddles.
Hi. Thank you again, the Women Voters, for having us here, and for so many people coming out to listen to us today. I grew up in the northwest suburbs in Schaumburg. I graduated from Schaumburg High School, and my family and I settled in Bartlett and moved here in 2017. When we were still living in Bartlett, we gradually came here for parades and to go to the theater and all, you know, the wonderful things that this town has to offer. Part of the reason why we moved here is because of this community and the people in it, and the other part was for the school system, which overall I've been very pleased with. I have two daughters that attend, they're freshmen and junior at East. But I do see some need where we could improve upon things within the school district. I am really passionate about mental health. Both of my daughters have struggled with that, and it's definitely something we're seeing studies about the needs for mental health care.
Thank you. Mr. Kuescher.
Okay. Can you hear me? Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for attending, thanks for hosting, we really appreciate it, and also kudos to all the candidates here. It's tough to sit up here and let the community hear your voice, and so tip of the hat to everybody who's doing this today. So I was appointed to the school board back in December of 2021, so I've been there for about 15 months. It's been a unique experience and certainly a challenging experience as we navigate quite a few different things for our students, for our staff, for our community. So again, thank you, everybody, for being here for this important discussion. My professional experience, I'm a small business owner, I'm a current NCAA coach, I worked in talent management, I was an assistant director of admissions, so I believe I bring a unique experience to the board, well-rounded experience. My master's degree is in industrial organizational psychology, so I like to apply those principles to each of the challenging things that we are tackling. I'm currently co-chairing a number of different committees, and I want to continue the work that we have been putting forth over that last 15 or so months. And my main goal, if I was going to sum it up, was a common vision for the whole community.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Mr. Lackner.
Thank you. Thank you for facilitating today's event, and more importantly, thank you for promoting civil discourse. I think this is the real foundation of a lasting democracy. The other foundation is an effective education that leads to a just society. And time and again, we see proven that access to education is the real driver of social and economic mobility for our students. My wife Amy and I have three children here in D-303 and one who's graduated, and we moved here nine years ago specifically because of the schools and the positive reputation that they have, and I'd like to see that continue. Academic excellence is the most important thing for the board to focus on, and the reason that's so is because our students take with them only the experiences and the successes that they've had here at D-303. Please consider this, if you've watched me at the board table, you'll know that I'm known to watch the numbers, and I've heard people say it's not just about the numbers. That's right. It's about the students behind the numbers. Consider this, we have about 1,000 students in each grade. If we help 10% improve more, we have 100 students doing better.
Thank you. Mr. Lentz.
Thank you, League of Women Voters. My name is Thomas Lentz. I started my career as an auditor for a large for-profit education system, and really got to know the nuance and difficulty of managing education with limited resources. From there, I transitioned into management and information technology consulting, and I've been doing that for the past 16 years. My wife and I moved our three children, our whole family, here from Bartlett in 2019. I joined, joined the Citizens Advisory Committee for the school board. I participated in our strategic planning efforts, as well as our facility master planning, so touring our buildings, really getting to understand the community, and representing the community and empathizing with the community to the board. A number of my friends and neighbors have encouraged me to run, and that's why I want to take my skills that I've had in the job market and bring them to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. McKay.
Good afternoon, and thank you all for coming. School board elections are really critical to a community, but we, decisions we make impact kids, but they also impact homeowners and community members, so thank you for your time and for your voting. I am running for reelection. This is, will be my second term. I have been an educator for over 40 years. I've retired from St. Charles as a district administrator, but I was a teacher, an award-winning principal, and worked at the state. So I come with some expertise and knowledge that I think have added value to the conversations. I have two grandchildren who are currently in D-303 at the high school and at the middle school, and will be really proud of this district for what they do for kids. However, we have work to do. We have hired an outstanding superintendent, and I hope to be able to support his work with his team as we close gaps and we do what's right for all kids. Thank you.
Mr. Palacios.
Thank you for the League of Women Voters, or Center for King County.
You guys speak into the microphone.
Thank you for the League of Women Voters, and for all of you.
You can tip it down.
Oh, that's not my thing. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Thank you for the League of Women Voters, and also all of you for coming today. My name is Elias Palacios. I have a few reasons for running for the school board. I have two children, like other members, and one is going to grammar school, the other is going to the middle school. And also, I have a passion for helping other people and preserving the quality of the school system, and I believe our public education is very important for all of us. And all my three campaign issues are, one is safety, the other is making sure students need to have a good education, which academics, and keep taxes low. And thank you for having me at this forum, and thank you for coming again.
Thank you. And Mr. Rubard.
That was me, I'm not Joe Mello, Flacker. Hi, I'm Richard Rubard, you can call me Ricky. I'm running for the two-year expiring term, so I'm one of the three for the one. I've lived in St. Charles since I was eight years old. I went to elementary school here, and then I went to Haynes, which is now where the school board meetings are, and then I went to St. Charles. It was just St. Charles. Now it's East. Excuse me, now it's East. I then went on to college, I was a non-traditional student. I was one of the students in high school that fell through the cracks. This is one of the emphasis that I want to bring to the board. It is my unique experience as a student. I'm an advocate, an ally, and an educator. I teach political science at Elmhurst University, have a master's degree in history, I have a bachelor's in political science and history. I understand the importance of an all-inclusive curriculum that represents everyone, regardless of race, background, sexual orientation, or gender, and I want to make sure that we protect all members of the community, and that's why I'm running.
Thank you. And Ms. Van Heel.
Yes. Thank you very much, League of Women Voters and the community, for being here. It is an important election. I've been a long-term resident of this district for 34 years, three of my children attended, happily married for 35 years, and two grandchildren. My professional experience started in the business community where I've been for the last 20 years. I then went on to get a master's of arts in teaching from National Lewis University. I've studied five districts, including St. Charles, brought my masters back to St. Charles, became a social studies and science teacher in both Haynes and Thompson Middle Schools. I see that we need a corporate curriculum that gets back to basics. I think we need to have a secure discipline policy across the board to protect all of our children, and I do believe we need to get back to excellence in education. Thank you.
All right. Our first question. What are the strengths of the St. Charles School District, and what are its weaknesses? And I am going to start with Ms. Deepenbrock.
Sure. Thank you. I would say one of the foundational strengths of any district needs to start with the staff and the teachers. If you don't have strong staff and teachers teaching our students, that are going to become everything that has to do with our society and being productive, it's going to crumble, and I think we have a really great, I, my experiences here have been fantastic with teachers and staff, from bus drivers to the actual educators to principals. I would like to think that they need some more support, and that strength will quickly crumble if they become exhausted and don't feel like they have the bandwidth to take care of what they're good at. So that's one of the things that I think are incredibly fantastic and strong about this district, is that our staff and teachers truly love our students and what they do, and that the current administration is really fostering that love and passion by example.
Thank you. Ms. Duddles.
Thank you. I have to say, I've been very pleased with the staff and the academics that my daughters have experienced since they've been at D-303. I think it's fabulous. We do have a high rate of students that graduate from D-303 and go on to college, which is amazing. So I think we do need to do all that we can to support the staff and keep that going. But we do have overcrowding in the schools, and some of the teachers teach on cards, and that's not being excellent. So we need to make sure that we're providing the space needed, so a student at one school can have the same experience that a student at another school has. I'd also like to see more proactive mental health in this school district, and also see a strengthened technical program and trade program for those percentage of students that don't go on to college.
Mr. Kuescher.
Thank you. So strengths and weaknesses are some of the things that I explore often. I think that this district is now headed in a better direction with the new administration, a new vision of excellence for our community. There has been a tremendous emphasis upon transparency and communication, and from the feedback that I've received from many different community members, that was a major issue in years past, and so we have tasked the current administration with exactly that, transparency and communication to all the various stakeholders within the community. So I think that that is, I think that was an area that was a challenge previously, is that better? That was an area that was a challenge previously and has now become a strength. We have, we are putting emphasis on a number of those areas, because the things that we need to improve are the things that we want to be identified as excellent in the future, most notably academic performance. I don't think there's a person in this room that thinks that we have achieved the degree that we are capable of, and we are putting strong emphasis upon not only being the best amongst our comparable peers, but the best in the state and nationally.
Thank you. Mr. Lackner.
Thank you. I think the most important strength that D-303 has presently is an engaged set of teachers. We have a large faculty, and they really are focused on positive outcomes for students. At the same time, there's been a real lack of focus associated with which parts of the curriculum are the most in need of change, and there's a real opportunity for us to really laser-focus on programs that matter and that will help students succeed. We also have a really strong financial management stand, program in place for statutory reporting. The revenue that we get, we manage well. At the same time, there's a real opportunity for us to improve how we look at the spending that we outlay in order to drive academic excellence, and bringing the link together of our discretionary spending with positive outcomes for students is a real opportunity for improvement for the district. I think when we bring those two things together, we have the opportunity to better support teachers in what they're doing in the classroom.
Mr. Lentz.
Thank you. I'll echo what has already been said regarding the teachers and staff. I've been walking the community and talking to people, and it is consistently one of the things that I hear about the great experiences we have and that our children have in that. At the same time, our community is also a strength. Our community has gone through a number of challenges over the past several years, and even with all of the strife and everything else, our community has found ways to come together and work towards goals. As far as our weaknesses, again, our academic performance has been lacking for a number of years. I'm very excited with the new superintendent being brought on, as well as some measurable things being put in place, some measurable indicators being put in place to hold him and his staff accountable. Again, I'd like to see more engagement with our community and see the board continue to hold the superintendent accountable for delivering those academic results. Thank you.
Ms. McKay.
Our strength is with our kids. Our kids come to us because our community cares about education, and our staff and teachers care about the success of those students, and they work hard, and as everyone has said, they are very engaged in making sure that all kids are being heard and can succeed. But at the same time, that is also a challenge, because instruction and, we gotta, something wrong. Closer. I can, better, even closer. Okay. Instruction is a very complex task and requires a lot of support across the organization so the teachers can do their best work for kids. So we have strengths and we have challenges. Facilities is definitely one that's in front of us right now, but also how do we meet the needs of all kids, because there's a future in front of us that we don't know, and that we have to have our kids ready to do that. You can't just do a traditional approach, you have to look to the future.
Mr. Palacios.
I see strength in three different directions at least. One is students, and second will be, not enough, in that order, but anyway, parents and staff, all together. Those are the strengths. It's like a company. When you have a company, a corporation, the strength comes from all together, stakeholders. And also, I got experience from my son, who is in middle school, and my daughter, who is grammar school. And what will be better or to increase or to change will be increased communication between the board, the parents, and all stakeholders, especially when there's curriculum base, because we want to improve academics to compete within the state and nationwide.
Thank you. Mr. Rubard.
Thank you. Great question. Obviously, the strengths of the community are teachers. Obviously, teachers have done a herculean job through the pandemic, maintaining what they could as they worked from home and through Zoom and all of that. Second strength is the students, of course, it's a wonder for the community. I sat at those desks, I know what the community is like as far as that's concerned. Turning to opportunities, I think the first one really is mental health. You can have a great teacher, great students, but if your student is sitting there and they're anxious and they're worried, or they don't understand what they're feeling or going through, no matter how great the instruction is, it's not going to get hard, right? So your, your numbers and your academic results aren't going to increase unless you involve mindfulness, a whole student process, right? And that's just not math, that's just not reading, that's not just writing, it's the emotional well-being and the mindfulness of the students, right? The other opportunity, I know I have like 10 seconds left, is to increase in the electives, like, thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Van Heel.
I do think we have a wonderful community. It shows with this large room that's packed, and I do think it's in part because of the wonderful parents we have and the great students we have. I do think there are rooms for improvement, most definitely, and many of those made here, but I think most importantly, we have one shot at our children's academic achievement, and we do have to make sure that our children are achieving and meeting those state standards and goals with a basic foundation in math, science, and reading. It's until we get this right that I don't believe our children do have academic success. Thank you.
And Mr. Becker.
One of the greatest strengths in this community is the community, and it's the collaboration between our teaching staff and our students and our parents and our community agencies working together to meet the needs of all of our kids. And it's, it comes through in our graduates. If you've had the opportunity, which I'm sure you have, to see graduates in our community, where they work, where they've gone on to school, and, and that is the number one focus of what we're trying to accomplish, is having our students be contributing members. Given that, there are still always areas where you can improve, and one of the areas I'd like to see is a complete alignment in all the areas that were just discussed, an alignment of moving our facilities forward in a positive situation, meeting the needs of the whole child, and also our staff members, induction and mentoring so that they, we retain the quality staff members that everyone has talked about today. So aligning all our programs to meet those needs.
Thank you. All right. Second, second question. Do you support Illinois legislation that would allow the St. Charles School Board to develop a student safety and protection plan that includes arming teachers, administrators, and other staff? And I'll start with you, Ms. Duddles.
Absolutely not. That's it. (Laughter).
So, very, very great question. Thank you for asking it. I actually co-chair safety currently, so I have the luxury of working with the various municipalities, including our wonderful police department. We actually have a wonderful strategy for the safety of our community, and most recently were recognized as amongst the best in the country. So we have undergone a great deal of training for both our staff, we'll be rolling out some new initiatives moving forward to ensure the safety of our students, because all else, all these other variables are certainly important, but if we're not safe in the classroom, if students aren't safe, if staff aren't safe, there is no learning occurring. So I think the community will be very pleased with some of the initiatives that we'll be rolling out, as well as just understanding that the reputation of our community as far as safety is concerned is nationally renowned.
Mr. Lackner.
I think it's really important, I think it's really important that everyone recognize the power of collaboration between agencies. We have a very powerful and positive relationship with the St. Charles Police Department, and work closely with them to really harden the buildings and to ensure that we have control over who enters and exits the building. And I think the most critical thing for us to be thinking about in terms of student safety is that physical access challenge. Once we have that collaboration in place with the police department for student resource officers, and we have the plan that Mr. Kuescher was talking about, and around safety in place, we can feel much more comfortable. At the same time, it's incumbent upon the district and all members of the board to ensure that appropriate resources are put behind those safety programs so that they continue to move ahead and to become more and more effective over time.
Mr. Lentz.
We live in Illinois, I don't know how real that legislation really is. I agree with Mr. Kuescher, Mr. Lackner, yet again, the, the buildings and ensuring the buildings are safe, just like we treat a bank, just like we treat any high-value institution, these are our most precious, our most precious possessions are in them, right? Our children. We have to treat it with the same reverence and, and not ignore any of the security concerns that we have, right? So continuing our relationship with St. Charles Police and all of our different metro areas, like, continue that effort. Thank you.
Ms. McKay.
I'm against that legislation. I am for safety, however, and we have five, I believe jurisdictions that we work with, and we have a great relationship, as Mr. Kuescher and Mr. Lackner have talked about. Safety is a major concern of the board and the community, but arming teachers is not the answer to that. There are far more, there are, we want our kids to get out of the building and to be safe. We don't need teachers worrying about where their gun is or those kinds of issues. But I believe very strongly that we have a very safe school district and that we are working with all of the police and fire departments to make it as safe as we can possibly do.
Mr. Palacios.
I am against the legislation also, and also, one of my campaign issues is keep all the students safe, work on reducing incident, the bullying behavior, and prevent, prevent mass shooting within the school presence. And when I say that, because I do have experience in mental health, substance use disorder, and forensic treatment, evaluation, and assessment for many years. And what I base this is, not only, we need to keep and maintain the mental health of all the students, but not only, I am in agreement with the, with the police and any other agreement that the district has, but internally, the students need to keep this mental health. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I promised myself I wouldn't swear, so I won't swear here. I am absolutely against any legislation that increases guns in society in any way, and especially, especially in a school. That's the opposite of what needs to be done. The gun crisis, as everyone wants to say, is a mental health crisis, it's also a gun crisis, but like, the mental health crisis is a, is a problem. And so increasing and investing in mental health services for students while in school is paramount in breaking the adult mental health crisis that this society also faces. Last thing, when I went to school, it wasn't like a prison. It's not a bank, it's not a prison. You shouldn't have to scan in to go to school, right? You should be able to sneak out and go watch Price is Right and eat lunch sometimes. They don't get to do that anymore, and that's a shame. So let's turn them back into schools and less like prisons or banks. They're not possessions, they're people. Thank you.
Ms. Van Heel.
I would too disagree that I would this, I don't approve that legislation, only because we would expect our teacher's skill and training to be educators, to be prepared and trained here, St. Charles Police Department, two of which they've stated we have a wonderful relationship with. I do believe, as Tom mentioned, that these are institutions that get protected, so too should our children be our greatest guests. I also believe that a discipline policy is also necessary to have in place, so each of our children can feel confident that the school has their back and that they feel safe, not only in our classroom, but going to and from school. Thank you.
Mr. Becker.
I've been in situations when schools have been challenged in that way through safety, breakdowns and problems that have occurred, and the look on students' faces is just something I'll never forget. One of the things that we need to learn is that students have to have ownership of this. They have to be taught from an early age that they need to report if they hear anything, if they see anything that's bothering them. That's of critical importance. You know, we can have all the guidelines, and we can have all the safety measures we want, but it's the students who have to have ownership with that. And it's, it's really critically important. When I was an administrator and a teacher in this district, we continued When I was an administrator and a teacher in this district, we continually had the right kind of drills that were in place. We had the right type of security measures, but it's the talk with the students and their talk back to us that is critically important in this particular case, and I would stress that in any policy that the school board would present.
And Ms. Deepenbrock, you're the last with this question.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I would also be very much against that sort of legislation. Teachers already have enough on their plate. They don't also need to be security for our students. They're already wiping noses, getting their hands washed, and teaching them how to be future leaders. I'm surprised to hear some of the current board members here at the table say that they might support something like that and that they have a strong collaboration with the police departments, since they don't trust the police department with regards to initiatives like Handle With Care, where it's simply about letting the school know that students need to be handled with care if they experience traumatic event. So I don't know how we can trust teachers or say that we trust our current police forces and also currently support or don't support or question other initiatives that aren't there to protect kids' safety mentally and emotionally. We do currently have things in place for the safety of our children. Current public may not know that extensively because that would defeat the purpose. And it's good to hear from current board members that they are still working forward to improve those even further.
Thank you. One reminder to all of you, please make sure you speak into these darn microphones. Ms. McKay, I'm gonna, and Mr. Palacio, make sure you do speak in, because I've just got a note saying that people in the back can't hear you, and if they can't hear you, then probably it's not getting recorded either.
To use our lunchtime.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, your playground voice. What role do you believe public schools should play in promoting diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging? Mr. Kushner, you are first.
Thank you. So as the public is likely aware, we have an initiative currently in progress right now. It's a superintendent-led initiative with board involvement, as well as community and staff involvement as well. It encompasses a number of different areas, like my esteemed colleagues here have mentioned. There are a number of issues that are facing our students, facing our staff. Certainly, diversity, equity, and inclusion is at the forefront of the mind of many of the folks in the administration, and certainly the superintendent is one of the initial things that he suggested that we take on and tackle as a board. It is also an integral part of our current strategy for moving forward over these next couple of years. So it is critical and certainly at a foundational level, involved in many and much of the decisions that we are making on a daily basis as a board.
Mr. Lachner.
Thank you. I serve as one of the board's representatives on the superintendent's diversity committee, and I'm pleased with the progress that that group has pushed forward around really identifying groups of students who have the opportunity to do better and to do more in the schools. I think it's important for us to recognize that in those concepts of belonging that the new superintendent have brought to the district, we really see a focus on recognizing that each of us is human, and each of us, through that humanity, deserves respect and deserves the expectation of high potential. And that's really what the committee is focused on, is how to really ensure that each and every student belongs in the school, but recognizes that the school is for them and that they belong there. And that's going to be the key to helping each student have the most positive outcome in their experience with D-303. So I'm excited about the initiatives that are underway and about the focus on the places where we have the biggest opportunities.
Mr. Lenz.
Every student deserves dignity when they go to school. And one of the things that we've seen, you know, over the last several years is that our academics have faltered. That contributes to students having challenges when they're not performing as well. There's additional pressures that are put on them. It requires additional resources from the district. Again, if elected to the board, I would focus on improving the dignity that we show all students, as well as making a priority for improving our academics and holding our administration accountable for those improvements. Thank you.
Ms. McKay.
All right. Can you hear me? Public school is the gem of democracy, and the idea that all of us come together to learn together, to become a community is critical, and especially in this time of divisiveness in our nation. And in D-303, we took the equity issue to heart, did an audit, found out there are areas where we need to really focus so that all kids are successful, hitting high rigor, finding their potential, and finding different ways and options and opportunities to learn. The more we learn about each other and build relationships, the more we see each other, talk to each other, have that sense of belonging, we're going to be a stronger community. Our kids will go out being great leaders to the future. So I'm proud of where we're at. We've got work to do. We're rolling up our sleeves, and I think we will see some great work coming forward.
Mr. Palacios.
Can you hear me?
Little more, little more now.
Can you hear me now?
Louder.
Okay. And what I, diversity and inclusion, and also, I believe, is students have different types of learning styles. Also, teachers, they also teach in a style. And they're different styles, meaning each one of us learn differently. And then we need to honor each one's learning. Like in the past, we put on the pedestal the IQ, and then we change or at least adapt to the emotional intelligence, because we wanted to have a broader human being. And especially for learning academic and learning what is supposed to learn at the school. Thank you.
Thank you for this question. I really hope to answer it for the first time. So we talked about belonging. And belonging is more than just academic results. That's test scores. Belonging is seeing yourself in your curriculum, seeing yourself in the stories that are taught through elementary through K through 12, right? It's seeing you in the art, the music programs. It's that reflection, accepting, it's not accepting or fitting in. Belonging is an actual sense of being part of the community. So reflecting that in their curriculum, having a sex ed program that mentions that other non-traditional ways of living exist? I'm sorry, my hand's starting to shake. I'm getting fired up. It's very, very important. I know folks, I've talked to folks who have gone through those programs and felt like they didn't belong, or they were wrong, or they were broken, because it wasn't reflected to them in the curriculum. Thank you.
Ms. Van Hee.
I've had the wonderful privilege, excuse me, of canvassing over a thousand homes now and getting out to meet my community, because I did want to reintroduce myself into the community. And the pressing issues with those parents and citizens are, what are we going to do to achieve academic success with our children? I have no question that each child needs and deserves respect and love that comes from the loving parents and community that we have. My fear is that when we start replacing the academic programs that are so inherent to our kids, like the AP programs we removed, and the early bird Spanish, for example, what we're doing to the detriment of our kids' education. Thank you.
Mr. Becker.
My initial response is we could do both. We could do both. We can meet the needs of our students and their mental health concerns that we have, and we can have the strongest academic programs, the best schools around. We can do both. Here's how: by aligning programs. A wonderful program is brought in, it's diversity, equity, inclusion education. Let's match that program or align it with our curricular department. Let's line it up with our special education department, which I can speak to personally, having a son who's autistic and has special needs, and the incredible inclusive opportunities he has at his elementary school right here. We can align together to provide the best academic possibilities and the best mental health, addressing the best of mental health situations. We can do it all. We don't have to choose between.
And Ms. Deepenbrock.
I'll follow that passion. So I get confused when I hear that we could do better. I mean, we can always do better, right? Perfect, that's the goal. You always want to try to strive for it, but it's not attainable. But we're already at the top 10% of academic excellence within Illinois. We have two schools that are blue ribbon, and I appreciate the striving for excellence, but at what cost? You know? And I really appreciate the needing to identify to the academics, because if you don't identify with what's being taught to you, you're going to shut down. You're not going to see your history in it. You're not going to see yourself in that. So how are you going to retain that? I'd also like to bring up that it's not always about test scores. What about career readiness? We also have Compass Academy. I don't know how many people in the room are familiar with Compass Academy, but that marries what Mr. Becker was just stating, is that you apply the academics to the action and it all makes sense to you. Math didn't make sense to me until I had to go grocery shopping or I had to place an order at work. So that's where I would like to see us continue ahead.
And Ms. Douglas.
I have been talking to people in my community for years, just as a community member, out walking my dogs and having conversations with parents. And I have to say, I haven't talked to any parents that have been awake at night over test scores. They're awake at night over making sure that their kid is not sitting alone at school, that their kid has a group of friends, that their kid goes to school and feels comfortable with who they are and not targeted. So I'm glad to see this DEI program is being rolled out. I think it's very necessary, and it interlocks with academic achievement. If you are going to school and you're getting bullied, if you're going to school and you don't feel comfortable, and you don't have a group, and you don't feel like you belong, you're not going to be achieving what you could be in school. So I think it all interlocks together, and it is really important that we're providing that support to students.
All right. Moving to the next question. We're going to start with you, Mr. Lachner, and the question is, do you support the implementation of a formal sustainability management plan to help guide decisions that will save money, increase energy efficiency, and protect the environment and the health of the school community?
I think the concept of sustainability and circular economy concepts that are focused on real conservative usage of limited resources, and we really only have two within the district, money and time, time being our teachers' time and their time with students. And I would support any of those kinds of incentives and initiatives that are focused on better managing the district's consumption of those resources of money and time. We don't have the luxury of either in infinite supply, and so we have to make hard trade-offs all the time at the board table about where those resources are deployed. I appreciate the notion that we can always do better. I reject the notion that we can always do more. We have a finite capacity, again, of dollars and time. And so any initiative that's really going to increase the efficiency of the way that we utilize the money on behalf of students and the time of teachers for effectiveness, I would support.
Mr. Lenz.
I would echo the sentiments of Mr. Lachner regarding our incentives around managing time and our money. We have a number of buildings that have operational challenges, right? We're not ADA compliant across the district. I can tell you that in those, with those resources, when a student breaks their leg at Wild Rose and they have a classroom that's on a different level, they may have to deal with it. Same thing at Lincoln. If it's on the second floor, we make that teacher move their entire class down to the first floor, right? Because the building's not ADA. So again, I would support any operational or, you know, economic thing that we can do to improve our operations and not impact our teachers and our students. Thank you.
Ms. McKay.
Having worked in a number of districts with buildings that were built 100 years ago or in the 70s, often buildings are built based on an educational philosophy, which in about 10 or 15 years is no longer necessary. And we do have some buildings where people, where rooms have been added or changed. We are not ADA compliant. We have a lot of facility work to do in front of us. And having a formal process is what the board is currently doing. I would encourage anyone who is interested in this topic to listen in. We are looking at the capacity. We are looking at the efficiency. We're looking at what we need for the future. We've already brought in lots of data and information, and having buildings that are good for 50 years would be fabulous. And again, as Mr. Lachner talked about, we don't have infinite amount of money to do that work, but we are trying to be as transparent as we go through the process.
Mr. Palacios.
I would echo some of the colleagues here, because I'm not expert in those technologies. Probably I need to learn a little more. However, what I do know is anything which is going to enhance the quality and also saving money, saving time and resources, and the benefit is for the students, I will support. Thank you.
Mr. Redbar.
Yeah, so as someone who finished school in 1999 at St. Charles, I went through the mold school, right? So I've seen this in action, right? I came home from school and took naps, because I didn't know why I was so tired after being at school for seven hours. Turns out I was breathing bad air. So increasing the air quality, making sure that the buildings are safe, structurally sound, and as efficient as possible, is very, very close to my heart, because it's something that I experienced on the wrong end. So we've overcome this before, and I think that with, you know, some smart choices, looking to future-proof these buildings and make sure that there's clean air for our teachers and students to breathe, I think that's really, really important, especially coming off the back of an airborne pandemic. So I'm all about making sure that everyone has a clean, safe place to learn. Thank you.
Ms. Van Hee.
I would support a sustainability and management program and report. One of the things I, as mentioned before my colleagues, and having been at the bottom of the rung here, I can say ditto, right? But I do agree with many of the topics that have been brought up. One of the things I think we really need to focus on, since Joe did mention, we do have limited resources and we do have limited time. So let's look at history. What programs have we put in place and what can we learn from them before we go reinventing the wheel? We do need safe buildings for our children. We do need to have them secure and sound, and making sure that they're in the best learning environment possible. Thanks.
Mr. Becker.
I've been saying all afternoon that there's a strong need for alignment, and I've got some great news. The community in the engagement program that I'm aware of has told us that their concerns operationally are overcrowding and these kinds of things that have been mentioned with facilities. Well, here's the great news. There's a strategic plan in place, and that plan is being utilized to take a look at the things we talked about: operations, the current use of buildings. Are we using them to the best of their abilities, the best of their capabilities, and efficiently? Lastly, taking a look at our demographics, the students who are coming into our district, the numbers of students who are coming in, and where they're placed, and the situations with placement as they come into our district. So this alignment I've been talking about all afternoon is happening, and it's important that that continues to meet the benefactors. The benefactors are our students.
Ms. Deepenbrock.
Yeah, thank you. Being truly up here at the bottom of the rung over here on the side, this question, it's difficult. I'm going to say that. I think that this is the kind of subject that I would need to turn to the demographers for and the people who are professionals. The board isn't meant to be an expert at all of these things. The key thing for a board member is to be open to listening and not think that you have all of the answers and that you can be an expert at X, Y, Z, elementary, P. So I would like to think that I'm the kind of person that listens. I research and I educate myself extensively on any subject so that I can make the best decision with regards to these things, especially being that I haven't actually been a teacher, although I did it in college, not the same sort of audience. I would also like to see things that we think outside the box for, like, how do we bring curriculum into, like, do the kids have gardens? Can we do that? Do we have space for that? I know we don't have space for building, but is there a way to bring curriculum outside and kind of give more of an airiness and space to the kids as they learn? What about solar panels? I don't know. Let's think outside the box for those sort of facility needs and see what we can do. Thank you.
Ms. Douglas.
Yes, of course, I feel the same, is what Barbara just said. I'm not an expert on this, so I would like to listen to people that are and then make the best decision. But of course, we want sustainable buildings. We are hearing about overcrowding, and we do need to make sure that we have enough space, that the buildings are safe for our students, safe air, and that they're comfortable. Being a teacher, it's notorious that the high school buildings are cold, freezing cold in one room and warm in another, so just whatever we can do to keep those buildings safe and comfortable for the students and staff, I'm all for.
And Mr. Kushner.
Okay, thank you for the question, nice to know you're here. Absolute bottom of the rung.
the rung here. So financial challenges are facing everyone right now. So it is critically important that, you know, from an affordability standpoint, from a sustainability standpoint, that that is top of mind and it is critically important aspect of our strategic plan. I own and operate a small business, so if I can't stretch out my dollar to the best of my ability, then I don't pay my staff or I don't keep my doors open. So we have to think creatively about how we stretch that. I had the luxury of running some leading strategies when I was working for a Fortune 100 company. You have to think strategically, you have to think creatively about not only how you best use the resources that you have, like the demographer report that we just recently went through at the board table. If you haven't seen that, please do review that. It's really about how we can best use our facilities. And then yes, critically important that we have the value and the use of our dollars spread to the best of our ability and that's all part of the strategic plan.
Okay, last question. And we're going to start with you, Mr. Lenz. Do you support banning books from public schools? And if you do, what criteria would you use to determine whether a particular book should be banned?
Thank you for the question. This is something that's come up quite a bit on my walk, so I've been going around walking and talking to the community. I have three young students in elementary school. I'm not a fan of banning books. You know, Huckleberry Finn, you know, Martin Luther King books stuff has come up. I'm also not a fan of having explicit materials in the elementary schools. So I would, at the board table, I would want to look to protect our students that are in elementary schools from being exposed to this type of material. You know, in high schools, I think there's a debate about educational value and other things. That I would defer to our librarians, the people that we are paying to pick and select these books. But at a grade school level, I would not support explicit materials in our grade schools. Thank you.
Ms. McCabe.
No, I'm against banning books, period. I think that folks who know school districts know there is a process for selecting a curricular material. It is done very carefully with great expertise to how do the curricular materials match to the learning of the standards that kids have. We have processes in place for families who are uncomfortable with certain materials or certain processes that we are going through in the district so families can opt out. So I believe very strongly that we have expertise in our school districts to provide the best learning materials and curriculum for all of our students.
Mr. Palacios.
I believe that in general banning books will not be the solution. However, parents need to have the right to decide which book, which material their sons and daughters will read or will see. Regardless of the level, could be grammar, middle school, high school, but they are minors. As we know, our brain matures in females like between 24 years old. And a young adult in males is 26 approximately. Therefore, parents need to be communicated at all times which material they would show, which material they would read because they are ultimately responsible for their, how they raised their children. Thank you.
Revard.
Yeah, thank you. So, I mean, just, let's just pause for a second and think, like, it's 2023, we're talking about banning books. That's ridiculous. No, I will not accept banning of books at any of these schools or any of that. Of course, there's an age appropriateness to all of this, but like, that is like full stop, that's it. But the curriculum does need to reflect the fact that this is a public service. The public is diverse. There are two mom families, there are single families, single parent families, there are black and brown people in this community, and they need to be represented in the curriculum. And just because your kid comes home with a book with two dads in it, that doesn't make it offensive or something that shouldn't be taught in public school because that is a reflection of reality. And that's just the world that we live in and we need to start thinking about how this looks. And then that fosters that sense of belonging, which makes the school safer and they don't have to be treated like a prison. I'm done.
Ms. Banky.
I think we have a wonderful community. I think we all came here for the core family values that this community represents. No, I don't believe in book banning, but I'm afraid that that label has been tossed around our media and our public quite too often to say, would we no longer hand keys to a nine or 10-year-old to drive a car than we would put objectionable material in front of them? I think, yes, we have a core curriculum to teach to, but that has to be material that represents the core curriculum. I think we need it to our parents to definitely educate our children and let them know the world in which they live and leave that responsibility to the parent. Thank you.
Mr. Backer.
This afternoon, every single candidate mentioned their belief of we have such an incredibly strong staff. Well, if you trust that incredibly strong staff that includes the library people who are just, are professionals, they are making choices that are in the best interest of our students. Of course, we wouldn't, we would never want to have a policy where we're banning books. And I reached back to the presentation by our library board candidates as well. We have a collaborative relationship between our school district and the library, and so we have to trust them as well. Now, at the same time, parents are passionate and it's talked about, Mrs. McCabe mentioned there are opt-out procedures if a parent has a problem. We have to listen to all our constituents. If there's an opt-out opportunity, they can take advantage of that. But in an overall general sense, we have to trust our educators that we all believe in, and we've mentioned that today, and the associations we have with our community as well, and the library board candidates talk about the same thing.
Thank you. Ms. Deepenbro.
Yeah, sure, thanks. Yeah, I don't believe in banning books. I think that something that's getting a little convoluted here is that there's a difference between having a book that you must read in class for curriculum and books that are available for you to seek out to read, right? So if something in the classroom is being taught and the book is suspect, right, with regards to all family values, and we're not talking about two dads or two moms, we're talking about things that may be traumatic to the mental place where, in which a child is at. We need to trust the committees we have in place and the librarians, as Mr. Backer said, to be able to tell you what is age appropriate for their comprehension. And with regards to that, that we need to be more concerned about the technology that's available, more so than the books, right? Because that's just being fed to you, whereas your imagination and your interpretation and the way your family and your community has raised you can help you fill in those blanks for you to make that reading a little more applicable to you. Thank you.
Ms. Duddles.
I am against book banning. And as a former teacher, I think how your imagination comes alive. I remember reading to Killam Ackenberg in seventh grade and then again in high school and being in a classroom and having discussion about that. And what an amazing experience that that is something that I still remember today. So I think not only should we not ban books, but we should be very mindful when we're developing the curriculum and trust teachers, number one, and number two, make sure that we are providing diverse experiences because that's how children learn, when you learn about people that are not like yourself from different situations that you would not otherwise know about besides reading a book in school and having that class discussion led by a teacher.
Thank you. Mr. Kushner.
Okay, thank you for this question. Yeah, this is certainly an emotional one for a lot of folks. I want to first say that this district is not in the business of banning books. There is a thorough review process for the age-appropriate nature of any of the materials that we are giving to children. I don't think that it's a secret that a second grader is probably not fit to be reading the same material as a 10th grader. And so there is a very careful review process that the district already does to ensure that the appropriate materials are in the appropriate place. We have qualified professionals who are doing exactly that. I don't think it can be overstated, though, that parental involvement is also important because at the end of the day, these children are going home to their parents and their parents should have some say and do have some say in this district regarding the materials that they read and review. So I guess in short, we don't ban books in this district and we do thoroughly review exactly the age-appropriate nature of the books and who should be reading them at what time.
And Mr. Lenz.
Thank you. I'm glad that the library board candidates had a conversation about this same issue. And I'd like to add to the conversation that the library's responsibility is a little bit different than that of the schools. The schools have the responsibility for students every single day during the school year. And so I think when you consider this issue, the idea that there are controls today on the laptops and the Chromebooks that each of our students take in order to prevent them from having exposure to the worst of what the internet has to offer, we have to consider that that process is in place to protect students. The same kinds of processes around review and inclusion of particular material in the curriculum and the availability of material in the school library is very similar to that protection process within exposure to the internet. I'm against the idea of banning books. I think the level of availability of concepts and content at the library here, the public library, is a different perspective than that which needs to be taken account in the schools.
All right, we're going to move to closing statements, but I think we're going to do it a little bit differently than originally planned because I've got no request for people in the back who don't, can't see you and are not sure what your names are and which one of the seats you are running for. So, Mr. Backer, Mike Backer, Thomas Lenz, and Richard Revard, would you just stand up for one minute? Again, these three gentlemen are running for the open two-year seat, one seat, okay? So I am going to start, let's see, Mr. Revard, I'm going to have you start with your closing statement, please.
I can stay standing?
You may stay standing.
Awesome. I teach and so I stand and I walk, I walk two miles at one night class once. So standing is more comfortable for me and less me to burn off that energy. All right, so real quick, because I wasted 10 seconds. I'm an advocate and I'm an ally and I'm an educator, right? I'm going to advocate for teachers, the students, and the community, right? I'm going to make sure that's reflected in the curriculum and in the schools, right? I mentioned belonging. I think I was one of two people who said belonging out loud when the question on belonging happened. Belonging is more than just fitting in, it's seeing yourself reflected in that way, right? I'm an ally. I'm going to be there to listen to everyone who comes to me to better represent our community in our schools. I've been in those schools. It's very important. Ultimately, I'm running because I care. I'm passionate and like, I don't have the board experience. I've worked in restaurants, so I understand people want to talk to the manager of the restaurant only when there's a problem, so I can listen pretty well. But I can learn how to be on a board and I've served on various small boards, but you can't learn passion and values and that's what I bring. Thank you.
Mr. Backer.
Thank you. I wanted to thank once again the League of Women Voters and the also the candidates who are running. I think I made it very clear where I stand today. It's about aligning all the best of in this district. I bring to the table the experience of a parent, an educator, and a community member. And what is critically important here is that we have this collaboration in our community where you all feel like you're engaged, you all feel like you have a voice. At the same time then, we take that information, we strategically put it together to meet the best needs of our kids with a wonderful staff and the best students that are, the best students around. And putting that alignment together is critically important going forward. I am very passionate about being here today and I thank you for your time to take moments to listen.
And Mr. Lenz.
Thank you very much, League of Women Voters, for the opportunity and the community to address you all. I'm a parent in our district. I moved here to be a part of this community and to represent this community. I've spent some time working with the board already as part of the Citizens Advisory Committee, spent time working on our strategic plan as well as our facility master plan. So I'm very familiar with the material and the things that the board is going to be working on. In the two-year board seat, it's very important that you come up to speed very quickly. So again, I think this makes it a strong asset. The board is there to provide purpose from the community as well as to monitor performance. And I think we have a tremendous opportunity here to improve the trajectory of our district. Please vote for me on April 4. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to have the remaining seven stand up. We have, starting at the far end of the table, Barbara Deepenbro, Lauren Duddles, Matthew Kushner, Joe Lackner, Becky McCabe, Elias Palacios, and Dolores Van Heel. And I will start with Ms. McCabe. You get to go first.
I get to go first. Well, thank you all for coming. This has been an interesting event for us. We have it all sat down together to hear each other and I thank all of you for running. This is a very important election. I believe I bring some experience, expertise, and knowledge about how educational organizations run. I had the honor of being on the board for the last four years, which was not an easy four years to have gone through. Yet we have worked hard as a board to listen carefully to our community. I believe we've hired an outstanding superintendent to lead us into the next phase of our growth to excellence. And I believe that I can bring what I've learned as a lifelong learner, as an educator, as a teacher, as a grandma, to help give us the best for our kids and to their future. So I hope you will vote and I hope you'll vote for me, too. Thank you.
Mr. Palacios.
Can you hear me now? All right. My name is Elias Palacios and I'm running for three campaign issues. One is safety for all students and also good education with academical improvement and also keeping the taxes low. These three things I'm running for this campaign. In my experience as a professional, mental health substitute disorder and also many groups that I was involved make me qualified to negotiate and work with all groups. And thank you again for all of you coming here and thank you everybody here. Thank you.
Ms. Van Heel.
Thank you. And thank you, League of Women Voters, all of you really for attending. This shows such a wealth of support and it's awesome. As I mentioned to you, I've been a 34-year resident of this town, raised three of my children in this district, and this is our home. This is your home. In fact, this is the reason we've all moved here is because of the outpouring of support, the wonderful family values that this community exudes. In fact, 88% of your taxes go to support these local schools and it's an imperative, one, that we have a curriculum that speaks to the core subjects, have our children proficient in those subjects, two, have a discipline policy across the board that's clear and concise to each parent and child so they feel safe, not only in their learning space but on that school bus going to and from. And again, third is let's attain excellence. Let's not just meet our state standards, let's exceed those. Let's bring back our AP programs, let's bring back the languages that our kids were studying once upon a time and give our chance to really succeed in the marketplace. Thanks so much for your time and I hope you vote, you go forth to Dolores Van Heel for your team.
Ms. Deepenbro.
Yeah, hi, thank you. So while I've been up here, I've heard a lot about experience. And as I said earlier, it's not so much, I think, about experience as maybe coming to the table with fresh eyes, being somebody who's willing to listen to experts and not try to feel as though you need to be an expert. Because I think that's where waters get a little muddy. The other thing I would challenge you to think about is, do you want to just vote for the same group think or do you want to make sure you have a board that's well-balanced so that all voices are represented and heard? You know, do you want a little bit of A, B, and C? So I had 10 years of experience as an executive assistant to senior-level individuals, so I know how to juggle a lot of personalities and I understand the tough decisions, the finances and the importance of balancing budgets, and that's all the stuff that you can learn about. What you can't learn about is the passion and wanting to represent citizens. I also have two children in this district, I'm going to throw that in there because I feel like I haven't represented those wonderful little beings of mine. And I thank you so much. Please go out to vote, it's very important.
Ms. Duddles.
Thank you so much again for having this forum. Thank you for having this forum and for so many people being here today. I am running as a mother, an educator, and an advocate, and I feel like my voice is an important voice that needs to be heard on the board. Another piece is I've been talking to so many parents and I just think we have so
Another piece is, I've been talking to so many parents, and I just think we have such a small group of parents that come to the board meetings that are involved in the Listen, Learn, Return and things like that. So communication is key. If we're not hearing from parents and students about what is going on in the school, how can we make improvements? So that is a really big thing, is find some ways to, on a regular basis, hear from people in the community, the students and the parents, and find out what issues are important to them so we can make sure that the school system will reflect that. Thank you so much.
Mr. Kushner.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here. It's been a pleasure to speak in front of you, and I welcome any feedback, emails, phone calls, be happy to field any questions that you have. You know, over the last 15 or so months, I've recognized really how tough this role is. There are a lot of different issues that we need to discuss and a lot of nuance to each of those issues. There are no simple answers. And what I have found, when we have started moving this district in the right direction, it started with collaboration. You know, over the last several years, all of us have experienced that we have focused tremendously on what we disagree upon, and that has created polarization, tribalism, you name it. And what I found is that this district is headed in such a better direction because we started thinking about what we agree upon, and we started there. And when we can create and share a common vision, that's how we're gonna achieve excellence in this district. We can flesh out the things that we disagree upon, certainly, but focusing on a common, shared vision is why we're headed in the right direction and why I'm confident that we can continue this great work, and we hope to have your vote on April 4. Thank you.
And Mr. Lackner.
Well, thank you. For those of you who have yet to meet me, I just completed two years of service on the board, and I am running for the four-year slot, and I hope I'll get your vote. I'm really pleased with D303's new trajectory. You know, we've hired a new superintendent, we've changed the way that we're looking at facility usage, we're looking at new ways of managing the budget, we have really adopted a tone of civility and civil discourse at the board table, and that's really helped us move forward faster and better. You know, my family and I have a deep philosophical belief in the positive power of education. My mother was a teacher, my wife is a teacher, they inspired me to volunteer to serve on the board. You know, when I was growing up, my father, when he would come home from his third shift factory job, would tell me every morning, "Go to school, learn to use your brain, because then you will have the option to choose how you wanna live your life." That advice has stuck with me and inspired me throughout this journey, and I think that's the least that we can offer our community.
Thank you. So these seven are running for three four-year terms. I have you all stand up, and let's give them a big hand.